Hi, I'm Jeremy Crosby.
And I'm Nick Boucher. We're your hosts for the program that's all about your city, Talking Pittsburgh.
Every weekday, we pull together the news, events, and information you need to stay on top of what's happening in the city of Pittsburgh.
Find Talking Pittsburgh on cable TV, Roku, Amazon Fire, Apple TV, and our live stream on the web. Plus, you can find all our headlines and stories on Facebook, YouTube, and our video on-demand service. This is your city.
Keep up with Talking Pittsburgh and the issues affecting you and your neighbors.
Want to know what's happening in your city? Get notify me messages from the city of Pittsburgh. Visit fitchburgwi.gov on your computer or mobile device and select the big notify me button on the left. Enter your email and/or phone number, whichever is best for you to get notifications. Scroll down the list and select all the topics you're interested in to receive email or text messages about. You'll be notified every time one of your topics is updated. Sign up for notify me. One more way to keep up with your Pittsburgh government.
Everything my neighbors have said.
Okay, thank you. Harvey? Harvey, I don't understand. What do you say here? Well, Harvey, where is Harvey? Harvey? He's registered in support. Okay. And then Tyron Buckingham, he wishes to speak, I don't know, in support?
Yes, I'm in support.
Okay, that's it?
I think we've all come to an agreement, choosing forward.
Okay, okay, thank you. Okay, so we are done. Okay, thank you very much for coming. I don't know how many times you have come, and I appreciate your support for this. And I also want this development to be built, believe me. Okay, so any other question? Okay, Jim?
I'd just like to say I appreciate your tenacity. You know, when we met and you just kept going. And I mean, I think, are you going to do another one? All right, so thank you. I appreciate what you've done.
Bill?
Yeah, I'm glad to see this come forward. I just want to express my disappointment that we had to configure the neighborhood the way that we did. If you look at page 40 on the bottom right in the fine print, you'll see that it's nearly a 50-50 split in terms of coverage between the buildings and the streets and driveways. All of those streets and driveways, if we had, if we'd be able to put the buildings along Rimrock and Maloney, all that area could have been backyards and park space for the residents. And yeah, I'm just disappointed that that could not have happened.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so all those in favor of ordinance 2025-0-05, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Okay, thank you. Congratulations.
I'll move approval of ordinance 2025-006, removing mobile home parking requirements by repealing section 32143 of the Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances.
Second.
Plan Commission passed.
TTC?
TTC passed.
Are you moving which amendment?
I'm sorry, as approved by Plan Commission.
Can you say what the change that we did?
Yes, so this is like our final, like removal of parking requirements, just to get us, our parking minimums that we have in our ordinances. It's a last reference. We've already removed them, but this is a final reference of removing. However, there is a state ordinance that requires basically the same level of parking spots for the mobile homes. So we made an amendment that basically says we will require nothing except what is required by the state, in so many words.
Okay, any comments, questions? Here none. All those in favor of ordinance 2025-0-06, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Thank you.
I did have a couple of things I wanted to just point out. We had a catch-all use in the ADR for the Lacy Road Water Tower. So that is coming forward. We did an ADR for the Jamestown Crew Car Wash, which is the one on McKee near Fitcherona. We did an ADR on the Illuminus Senior Housing remodel. That's a remodel, not a new building. And just had an update on the neighborhood plans. And that's all from Plan Commission. And I would like to make a motion to... I would like to make one more motion to move Resolution R 4625, which is the sustainability plan, to now in the agenda.
May I move for a brief recess for a bathroom break?
You can go to bed.
I was also going to get the cake.
We are going to have a closed session, so.
Oh, okay, fair enough.
Yeah, okay.
Second.
Second. All those in favor of moving Resolution R-4625 up to the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. So, okay, so Bill? And then we have Phil and our consultant Ted Rodman. I don't know, you want Phil to start this? You?
First, I will move to approve Resolution R 4625, approval of the City of Pittsburgh Sustainability Plan.
Second.
RCC approved.
Okay, can you tell us? I think we already heard about this, but I don't know.
Yeah, so I guess I'll maybe just note that we saw this plan,
and we were given opportunity to provide feedback. And I guess there wasn't anything in the agenda packet that beat me over the head to indicate what changes there have been since the last time we saw this. So I'm hoping that between Phil and Ted, they can kind of give us, you know, a bullet list of changes that were made in addition to the overall document.
Sure thing. Yeah, I apologize if that wasn't included in the packet. I thought it made its way in there. I didn't double-check to confirm. The changes that were made were largely, you know, pretty surface-level. There were a few copy editing changes, a couple of readability things just for consistency throughout the, throughout the plan. Things like removing some double negatives and making a couple graphics a little bit more readable. The most substantial change that you would notice was a couple of items. We changed language to soften it a little bit. So one item, this was in Buildings and Energy 2-3. This had to do with incentivizing projects in TIF districts to pursue green elements in their, in their ADBs or ADRs. We changed that from required to encourage. And so we softened language a few times like that. There were a couple of concerns when I spoke with economic development at a little bit more length, just about wanting to make it clear that the city is really trying to encourage a lot of things. We're trying to explore incentives that we want to provide to try and encourage certain types of developments. We don't necessarily have those incentives yet. I know they had already received some questions from some eager businesses, which I'm really excited to hear about. But who had gotten the impression that incentive dollars were already available? So we just kind of wanted to make that clear, that the action items are calling for us to explore incentives. If we can find them, make those available. But that was the bulk of the changes, were more about readability. And a couple of things were just softened language, just to clarify some points.
Okay, thank you. Any questions?
I'm so excited about this. I think one of my first budget amendments was trying to put funding in the budget for, to fund this. And I had to do it a couple of years in a row to get the funding put together. And it's been a long process, but it has been an outstanding process. I hope this is a model for future plans that we put together between the public comment, just the quality of the work, and then also all of Phil's work with staff to create an implementation matrix so that we're actually going to have a plan to implement these items. Sustainability is not just a good thing to do environmentally and for the future of our planet and for the people that live on that planet, but it also is good economically for the city of Pittsburgh. It saves us money, and it allows us to be, allows us to continue on to the future, a changing future. And so really excited about this plan. Could not be happier that we're at this point. And thank you so much to Phil for all of your hard work on this for so many years. Thanks for the RCC Commission, the Resource Conservation Commission, over the years that's pushed this so hard for so long. And thanks to Pale Blue Dot for such an outstanding process.
Okay, Dave?
I was reading through the, you know, the water, the water part. They hinted at, well, we could, to reduce water usage, we could increase our rates, so it'd be, you know, people would be disinclined. And I don't, I don't think that's even legal in the rate-making system through the Public Service Commission. I don't, I don't think it's legal, and I could be very, very regressive. So I guess, yeah, I'm just going to say that that one should be crossed off. But that's all I wanted to say.
Okay, so I want to say...
I appreciate that. Well, yeah, that's, sorry.
No, go ahead.
I was just going to say that's the type of action that we will absolutely look into. Alder Hurst, I don't believe you were able to make the last meeting when we discussed this. And so one thing I did call out there is that it's a lot of action items there, and we're kind of looking at this as a menu of options. We'd like to, of course, implement as many of these as possible. Going through the implementation plan over the last few months with staff, and as we continue moving forward and looking at these things, we'll, we'll go through it with, with more of a fine-tooth comb and really, really hammer out what needs to be made more aggressive, what we can do more rapidly, and if things need to be adjusted, amended, because we discovered that, you know, maybe something isn't actually as feasible as we thought.
Thank you, Phil.
Okay. Jay, okay.
Yeah.
Short and sweet.
I looked through most of this, and I think it's a good plan. It's not perfect, but it's not going to be perfect. So I, I'm going to vote for it, and I appreciate the work you did with staff and with Pale Blue Dot to get this done because it's, we need it as a guiding document, especially with the zoning code rewrite coming up.
Okay, so I want to say thank you, Phil, for all your work on this one. I think that it's great that we continue investing in sustainability because, you know, climate change is real. It's great that we are, we are, you know, approving this plan tonight. So we are going to equip the city in becoming more resilient to the effect of climate change, because climate change is real. And we are going to continue investing in this municipality and LLC. Okay, all those in favor of Resolution R-4625, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The plans is approved. Okay, thank you.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to change the agenda.
Okay.
For 11 new business, Section 11 New Business, I'd like to move B, C, D, E, F, G, H, and I to now in the agenda. That is all of our action on claims and closed sessions.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor of moving the agenda up, again, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Okay, so we will need to ask you two and everyone... Ah, we need to, first, we need to see we are going to close session. Okay. Okay, so, okay, so who's going to?
Valerie can kick it off.
Valerie, can you? Can you tell us?
You bet. Oh, I apologize.
Yes, and Chris, yes.
I apologize. My lens cover was on, which I didn't realize. So we're here on a couple of claims today. The first one is the tax exemption claim. And I think the attorney for the property owner is here. I don't know if she wishes to speak or if she's just here to observe. But before we move to a closed session, if the council wishes to do that, I think we may want to afford her the opportunity to speak if she'd like.
Good evening. Yes, I will be brief, given the lightness of the hour and the time that the, the city has been spending on all of the important issues. But just, so very briefly, I just wanted to briefly indicate that these properties... Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, my name is Christina Summers. I'm with Ryan Harper and Avangor, and I'm here on behalf of MMS Chapel Valley LLC and MMS Treverton LLC as well. Any other questions before I just briefly address the council?
Nope.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you, everyone. So these, the issue before the city, these are property tax exemption questions that we filed the exemption request, the city denied the exemption. As a result, we filed the refund claims. So that brings us in front of the council with respect to action on the refund claims. Just briefly with respect to the properties, there is one located on Chapel Valley Road, one located on Treverton Pike Drive. These are properties that are used for administrative purposes in the operation of other exempt properties, such as skilled nursing facilities, properties licensed, certified, or registered under Chapter 50, home health and hospice facilities, and the like. One of the properties, the property on Treverton Pike Drive, does have a very small percent that is leased to a third party. That lease will incidentally end, terminate in 2025. It's not anticipated to be renewed. That accounts for about 6.25% of the square footage of the property. As a result, we neither sought exemption nor sought a refund for that portion of the property. The property on Chapel Valley Road does not have any tenants, so that does not have that same issue. I can provide additional information about the specific dollars, the specific use of the properties as well. But I just wanted to keep my comments relatively brief, given the lightness of the hour.
Thank you. Okay, Valerie?
Yes, so this claim is before the council today, either for your approval or your denial. We have our tax assessor here as well on the line, as is Amy Seibel, who is the attorney that represents us in tax assessment and tax exemption cases. If the common council wishes to discuss this matter in a closed session, that is on the agenda for your use. And so you would just have to make the appropriate motion and vote on that before proceeding into closed session.
Well, pursuant to Wisconsin Statute 1985-1G, conferring with legal counsel for the governmental body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is or is likely to become involved, I would move that we go into closed session.
Second.
Okay, so all those in favor of going to a closed session, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. So we will need to ask Christina Sommer also to leave.
Are we ready?
Yep, we're ready.
I will move...
Open session, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are in open session.
I think we need to wait for...
Christina?
The waiting room to come back.
Yeah. Christina, are you there?
I am not.
Hi, I, I want to ask you a question about this claim. So we're understanding that this claim is brought by these two LLCs, but they are not nonprofit entities. So why do you believe that somehow they're eligible to be tax-exempt?
So they are nonprofit. They are single-member LLCs that are disregarded, and their sole members are nonprofit entities. So they actually are nonprofit entities.
Well, but it's organized as an LLC. Whether it's single member or not, I don't know how that helps you.
Yeah. You know, for tax and other purposes, when you are organized as a single-member LLC that is a disregarded entity, then they are treated as a branch or division of your sole member, which is nonprofit. Their sole stated purposes are to support their nonprofit members. They have no for-profit purposes.
That just doesn't make sense. All right.
Okay. Okay, so...
That's the way the law...
I will move to deny this claim.
I second.
All those in favor of denying the claim, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Christina. Okay, so next we move to item F. Who's moving this forward?
I'll do it.
Okay.
I will move to go into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute 1985-1G, conferring with legal counsel for the government body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is or is likely to become involved. And this is regarding the FTC Retail East LLC.
Second.
All those in favor of moving to a closed session, say aye.
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 Any opposed? The motion carries. So we are going to closed session. Ayes and your brain, because we have half the agenda.
But it looks like we're at the end.
Are we ready? Oh, I will move that we reconvene in open session.
Second.
Oh, second, okay. All those in favor of reconvening into open session, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are in open session.
I will move that we direct the city attorney to proceed as was discussed in closed session.
Second.
All those in favor of proceeding with what we discussed in closed session, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Thank you very much, people. Good night. Okay, so now we need, can you do an extension?
I would like to move to extend the meeting by 30 minutes.
Second.
All those in favor of extending the meeting by 30 minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. So, so now, let me know where we are.
We are at the administrator's report. We're back to the beginning.
Oh, my Lord.
So I have one of my longest lists, but I will breeze through them only because most of them are events that are all upcoming in the next few weeks. So bear with me. I will, if anybody has questions, I will be happy to engage you in email or phone conversation tomorrow. First item is the Spring Recycle Event. That's coming up this Saturday, April 12th, 8:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. here at City Hall. That's available for confidential paper shredding and electronics recycling. Next event is April 16th, 4:30 p.m. The Chamber's Business After 4. That'll be held at the Locksley Event Center, which is located at the intersection of Anton Drive and Carriage Street. Waterway Cleanup is coming up Saturday, April 19th, from 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. Meet at the Nanny Berry Park Shelter. And then again, Saturday, April 26th, again, 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. There are three locations available for that day. The Duns Marsh Trailhead, the Corey Hill Park Shelter, and the intersection of McKee and Yarmouth Greenway intersections. Those are your meetup spots. All of that information is on the city's website as well. Senior Center Pancake Breakfast is April 21st at 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. The Arbor Day Event is upcoming April 26th, from 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. at the Hugo Jamestown Park. Edgewood College is hosting a neighborhood meeting in regards to their proposed athletic complex near the intersection of Seminole Highway and Lacy Road. That'll be held April 30th at 6:00 p.m. at the Hop House Brewing Company. It is severe weather awareness week this week. There will be two statewide tornado drills on Thursday, one at 1:45 p.m., one at 6:45 p.m. All of our residents are encouraged to think about emergency preparedness related to severe weather during this week. The, it's also National Library Week, so we are obviously recognizing our library and the great work that they do. The Sine Road Reconstruction Project is underway. Road closures are in effect, so please take note. I want to also provide an update on the Fitcherona Road Reconstruction Project. Work is not likely to begin on that project until late this construction season, and more likely probably in the start of the 2026 construction season. City staff is still working on the easements and land acquisition that are necessary for that particular project. We're also trying to time that project and coordinate it with the Goose Lake stormwater improvements. And then finally, we're also working through some sewer service plans for the future South Stoner Prairie Neighborhood Development. I want to remind council of the organizational meeting on April 15th at 5:15 p.m. That is next Tuesday. There will be a photo that starts that particular meeting. The draft plan for the South Stoner Prairie Neighborhood Plan is on the city's website, and the final steering committee meeting for that will be held April 17th at 5:00 p.m. here at City Hall. I know we'll get to this later in the evening, but I want to thank Alders Wheeler and Allen for their service the last two years. And then finally, I want to thank Tracy Oldenburg, her team in the clerk's office, as well as all of the other city staff and election workers for their efforts during last week's election. So, Jim, sorry for all the information. If you have any questions, feel free to reach out, email, phone. I'll be happy to discuss.
Okay, can you send us an email from, to the council about April 30th, Edgewood Neighborhood Meeting, and the April 17th, South Stoner? If we can put it in our calendars?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Breakfast at the Senior Center?
Senior Center Breakfast is April 21st, 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m.
It's the 27th. The 21st is a Monday, that's the day after Easter.
27th.
It's a Sunday.
Then I can't read my own writing.
Okay, 27th, okay, sounds good. Say that.
Thank you for clarifying.
Okay. So thank you, Chad. Any question for Chad? Okay, mayor's report? Okay, so I have a lot of things, but I'm going to go, okay. One other thing that I want to mention is that this week, we met with... we met, we had a mediation with the Fire Department Union. We didn't get any agreement, so we are going to mediation. So, we don't know when it's gonna happen. Maybe it's gonna take a couple of months to schedule the date. But, so that one is, we are going to mediation. The other thing that I already worked is the council commission assignment. I will send you this week, the list. I already finished with that. I gave it to Lisa. So, I will send it to you, your next term assignment. I tried to fit, you know, you send your favorite committees or commission. I try to be fair with everyone, okay? So, you have any question about any of your assignment, please reach out to me after I send the email. For the April 15th meeting, because we need to take a picture, I will ask you, please, come to that meeting very well dressed up because it's a picture that is gonna be on the hallway, okay? So try to, okay? To improve your dress code, okay?
No, some shirts.
So, by the April 22nd council meeting, I will provide, I will recommend the council with all the assignment for residents to the different commission and committees, okay? So this is gonna come in April 22nd. I am hosting a listening session in District 3 with me and the two alder of the district on April 24th. We are working on the flyer and some, also, we are gonna have people from the Public Works Department to sign, Fitchville Police, and maybe the Senior Center. So, everyone is invited to participate and attend. Okay. The other thing that I am working is on the, we're gonna start working next week with the CIP, head of the department. I'm gonna present their CIP to me next week. So that one is the next big, you know, project. We also, I have also meeting with the police facility meeting to go, to discuss the progress of the facility. Everything is going, you know, underway. I want to share some election result. So, so the total eligible voters for the city are 20,330. Total votes cast citywide were 14,485. The total voter turnout was 71%. So, and we have absentee 6,298. So it was a great turnout. Turnout, okay, 71.
How does that compare to previous spring elections, Tracy? We had the largest turnout in the state for the April election?
Well, statewide.
State, okay. The other thing I want to mention, that I sent an email to you, that Heritage Preservation Commission selected four sites for markers, makers. And one is in Fitchville, is the Adderdyer Home. So, I don't know what is gonna be next, but I assume that we are gonna have a sign on there. They're gonna put a sign.
That is anticipated.
Yeah, okay, so when we do that, we're gonna do something. The other thing I want to mention is there is gonna be a Communities Resource Fair this Saturday, 26th, on the Fitchville Library from 11:00 to 2:00 p.m. And a lot of non-for-profit organization are gonna be, they're gonna have a booth. It's gonna be a fair, so I will ask you if you can, some of them are our partners, so if you can come and say hi and thank them for the work. What else? I also participated in the, in a forum called Local Perspective, Mayors in American Governance, and I was invited by the, what is this? I forgot where I was. Well, it was for the, in the local perspective, organized by the State of Democracy Research Institute and the UW Gov Law Society on April 1st. And there were a couple of mayors from Illinois, Ohio, Rochester, Minneapolis, Minnesota, and Oklahoma City. So, it was a good opportunity to mingle with other mayors. What else? Okay, let me see. That's it for now. Any question, comments? No? Okay. So next where we are? We did plan commission.
Public Works.
Huh?
Public Works.
Okay, so we are moving to the Board of Public Works.
I'll move approval, resolution R. 4725, approving relocation order for construction of Sine Interceptor Phase II Extension.
Second.
Public Works approved.
Plan approved and finance approved.
Finance approved, okay. So we have a resident, Dave Haight, who wishes to speak in opposition.
So I did send a email out with pictures and things, so if you happen to be looking at your laptop, you could probably pull that up. So, the Sine Interceptor runs perpendicular to the most sensitive groundwater-dependent eco-hydrological system in Dean County. And there's no mention of such a thing in either the contract that was let or this document. And the question is, why is that, given that Mr. Allen's leadership with regard to the Magaw Park, North Magaw Park neighborhood plan has brought in the state geologist, hydrologist, ecologist, mapped all this out, and modeled it. And you can just look at the picture and see it. So why the lack of any information at all? Well, here's part of the problem. So, there is no natural resource protection program in this city. So, there are, there was a discussion about what's gonna happen given cuts at the EPA. Well, guess what? 2011, there were more drastic cuts at the DNR. And the DNR can't check permits. So there's two types of permits. There's the on my honor, and there's the, we have to check everything. And the on my honor one for stormwater, it says, if you affect the wetland, you're not allowed to go for this permit. Now, by applying for this permit, you've certified that you don't change the hydrology, you don't add a point source, et cetera. Guess what? All the permits that the city submits, that in the hydrological model that's there shows a change in the hydrology of the discharge of the wetland, the city person submits the one that they certify that there is no impact to the wetland. Fraudulent. Okay? That's part of the problem. The other part of the problem is, and I've said this, I think is the fifth time between the council and the Board of Public Works, the person who is required to sign the stormwater permits is the mayor. The mayor may delegate to a person in the city who has operational control over the whole system, which would be the Board of Public Works. It's always been that way with Clean Water Act permits for this very reason, so that the organization is aware of their responsibilities. And if something goes bad, you can't blame it on the engineer in the corner. At this point, for this, I think that it should be tabled, and there should be a reevaluation bringing in the fact that this cuts through the Wabasaw Wetlands watershed. And I've included the lawsuit that was brought with regard to Terre Vessa. And we're gonna do the exact same thing. The burden of proof is on the city to prove to reasonable degree of certainty that there will not be any impacts to groundwater resources, streams, riparian wetlands, or the Wabasaw Wetlands. Good luck with that. And now you're going to start condemning properties without even having gone down the road of exploring what those might be? That's wrong. I have no choice but to begin taking action on these violations. It's my responsibility, since I know about it, to protect my community. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Okay, so...
Up here one sec. Can I? This, what we're looking at here, it's across the person's lot. That's not a wet, that's not a wetland. That's across his backyard is all I'm, all I'm dealing with.
So if you look at the map, right, so it's cutting. So the question, so for example, how deep is it? Pretty deep, I presume. Right?
We can ask those questions to Tim. Okay.
All right. I'm sorry, Mayor.
Tim, can you explain what the question that Dave asked? Can you repeat the question then?
So we're, when we, when we approved this at Board of Public Works the other day, you know, all we looked at was the easement we required across this, this private property, basically across this guy's backyard, which isn't, I'm assuming, isn't a wetland. You know, it's, he has a, he has a yard there, it's a backyard. So I'm not, I'm not sure how, this is all we're dealing with. We, we didn't have a map showing any, any other, any other extensions on there or anything else. We just had one lot that we were looking at, yeah. I'll let Tim.
Tim.
Where is Tim?
Tim, this is Chad. Do you want me to show anything?
Yeah.
Other than the site? I've got the GIS map pulled up.
I mean, you can turn on the environmental corridor later, Chad.
Right.
Which is under the, the planning. Should be, I think, maybe the leaf. The leaf symbol, yeah.
There it is, okay.
Right there. So there, there is the environmental corridor, and it's hard to tell with that sketch in legal exactly where it falls. You know, as Alder Herbst was mentioning, it does go through the backyard, so just north of the house on Haight Farms. And it's a 30-foot wide easement, and then it's a 10-foot easement, both on the north and south side of the permanent easement is the temporary easement needed for construction. So I would have to, you know, to, I would have to overlay this line work on our GIS to see exactly how that, that falls. And Tracy was the one working on this, so I can follow up with her and see how close it comes to that environmental corridor.
I guess I'd like to see that overlaid on a map, just to...
Can we do that?
Yeah.
Yeah, we can, we can do that. We can get the line work from the consultant that did that sketch in legal and incorporate that into our GIS and see where it falls.
Okay. I, I guess I'd like to table that till, till we can have the, the board look at that.
So where is?
So I've put, what appears to be, Tim, if I'm reading the surveyed easement correctly, it was looking like it was approximately 150 feet from a point. Now, I don't know if it's the parcel line or if it's 150 feet from the center of the roadway, for instance. But I have put approximately 150 feet from the parcel line to where my cursor is on the map, which would show, show, I think, what appears to be the center of the easement. But if the council certainly would prefer to have a map that shows an overlay, and I assume tabling this or postponing this for two weeks doesn't negatively impact anything with the particular project, Tim? If that's the case, we certainly can generate that information for the common council.
So I have another. Okay, I have another question. What happened if this is in the corridor, environmental corridor? So what is the next step? We're gonna have a, you know what I mean? What happened if that easement is in the, in the environmental corridor? So what is the, what we're gonna do? Because we need to have that extension.
Chad, can, can you bring up the sewer on there? I believe the existing sewer goes through there, that it, it's been permitted, and it is permitted through the environmental corridor. It's not an issue, they don't have an issue with construction through the environmental corridor for an interceptor. And Chad, go to the sanitary utility.
So there's...
That one is a green line.
Tim, there's a...
Yeah, it's all right.
This one, is this the green line you're...
Yeah, so, yep, so that's where we're tying in. So you can see that the pipes went constructed all through the environment corridor already. So it's, it's not a matter of whether or not they would permit it. It's allowable to be constructed in there, the pipe.
Well, and you can see, obviously, where it currently terminates adjacent to the lot, which I'm assuming is, generally speaking, where we're going to connect to extend it farther to the east.
Correct, and from that point where you're, yep, it'll go to the east, correct. And then once it hits Uptown Hills, it'll, it'll do a 90 south into Harton. Yep, a little, little further east, but that's the general schematic of it.
How deep is that sewer interceptor there?
Chad, you might be able to click on that manhole, and it could pop up the invert. So it's about, that's the inverted, the rim.
20, 22 feet. 20 feet, yeah.
So what is the difference between the two?
Little more than 20 feet.
Is it about 20 feet? Is that the difference there, Tim?
Yeah.
Yes, looks like it. It's hard to read on my screen.
No, yeah, it's 20.
Yeah, it shows rim elevation of 894 and invert elevation of 874.
Yeah, so it's a 20, 20-foot depth.
Okay, I think...
I would, I would like to table it, you know, pending, Tim, if you could provide us a map, you know, with where that easement is overlaid with the court, you know, the environmental corridor, just... So I think we're, I think where we connect, I think we're fine going across there, but I would prefer a, I'd like to see that on a, I'd like to see that overlay at Board of Public Works.
But it's already, I don't, I don't understand why, because it's already coming through the environmental corridor. You know what I mean? So we are allowing this.
We see where it is, but we don't have a permit to be in environmental corridor north of that, that house in the back.
But I don't think there is...
Tim, is it safe for me to say that if this is approved?
Before we go on, I'll second the motion to table.
We would have, have the necessary permits issued through the approval agencies such as the DNR.
Correct, as part of the design process, we would obtain those permits to construct within that corridor.
Yeah, maybe we should just clarify that this is a relocation order. This is not a, like, actual, this is an earlier phase of the process. Am I, right? We're just talking about the land easements?
Correct, this would allow us to do an appraisal for the temporary and permanent easement. And then also, once the appraisal's done, approach the property owner with negotiation of obtaining those easements.
Yeah, so this is not even like the design of the project. This is just fixing, working on the land. Yeah, it's gonna come back, right?
Correct. The, yeah, the construction of it would come back for approval with you guys. At that time, we would have all necessary permits to approve that contract for construction.
I mean, I think the concern has been noted, and staff is aware of it, and it's gonna come back to us. But this is just the step for us to be able to move forward with the project because we need the easements.
Yeah, we, well, we need to be able to, need to be able to obtain an easement, either through negotiation or condemnation.
Okay, so I have on the table the original motion.
Yeah.
You have a motion to table for two weeks.
That's what's on the table currently.
Do you still want to postpone it, Jay?
Yeah, I think so.
Even though it's just a relocation, it's not the actual design?
I think getting, getting a proper drawing would be most helpful, I think, to the council.
I think it'd be prudent.
Okay. Okay.
Can I get a date, sir?
Ah, there'd be Board of Public Works meeting on, uh...
When?
Let's see, we met on the...
April 21st is the Public Works meeting.
We met on the, we met Monday.
Council meeting is the 22nd.
Yeah, 21st.
So it'll be the 22nd back at council then.
Yeah, it'll be the 21st we meet, Public Works will review, and 22nd at council.
Okay. Okay, so I have a motion to postpone. All those in favor of postponing this to April 22nd, say aye.
Aye.
And you pause, the motion is, resolution is postponed. Okay. So next one.
Give me a sec, I have to get back to my, okay. Next, I'll, I'll move approval, resolution R-5425, authorizing acceptance of 2025 street resurfacing bid.
Second.
Public Works approved.
Finance approved.
Okay, what is this then?
This is, this is our, our annual street resurfacing. We've awarded this to Tri-County Paving. Total is 1.8, 1.86 million for this work. It's various streets around the, around the city. There's one up near, up near Leopold area. I had nothing to do with it, but some of the streets around my office. If you look at the map, you'll, you'll see where they are, so it's very standard, every, every year we have this, this contract for the resurfacing.
I remember that I sent you guys the map like a, like a month ago.
Yep.
So, okay. Any question, comment about this? Okay, all those in favor of resolution R-54-25, say aye.
Aye.
And you pause, the motion carries.
There you can see the streets up there, yeah. Okay, next, uh...
Oh, sorry. Too late.
A move approval, resolution R-5525, amending the 2025 TID closure excess increment fund and capital projects fund budget, City Hall upgrades.
Second.
Public Works approved.
Finance approved.
Thank you. What is this?
This is two components. One is install blinds in the genie ceiling room, and the other is to install the key fob system on, on the additional offices here in the, I believe it's just on the first floor here, maybe it's, it's more, the blinds are about 1,000. I, I think the total for this comes to 22,000 or 23,000 for this, for this work. The, you know, given, given what happens in this, in this day and age, to have that additional security, I think is prudent for our employees and, and people that are, that are in the building.
Okay.
This takes two-thirds.
Two-thirds, yeah. Any question, comments? Okay, we need a roll call, please.
Thank you, Mayor Alder Allen.
Aye.
Alder Dancer Jr.
Aye.
Alder Gerhart.
Aye.
Alder Herbst.
Aye.
Alder Jettser.
Aye.
Alder Maldonado.
Aye.
Alder Vafadari.
Aye.
Alder Wheeler.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Next, a move approval, resolution R-5825, approving amendment one with Pepper Construction for Lead Leadership and Energy Environmental Design Services for Police Services Facility.
Second.
Approved by the Board of Public Works.
Finance approved.
Okay, what is this?
So to, to obtain it, is Tim still on? I'll probably muddle through, but to manage, to manage the process to, to get the lead certification, we need, we're hiring Pepper to, to manage this process, and the contract, the amendment is for $170,600 roughly for this work. Let Tim give a little better, little better explanation of the, of what they're doing.
Tim, do you want me to take that?
Or, yeah, Chad, either one of you.
Yeah, Chad, either you or me.
Yeah, I can, I can take it quick. So as Alder Herbst mentioned, this would certify the new police services facility to leadership and energy environmental design standards. That is the full spelled out version or stated version of lead certification, if you will. They basically certify that the sustainability improvements, such as the installation of solar geothermal enhanced building envelope to include insulation and windows, all took place, and therefore, the building can be commissioned as a lead rated building. The city did that with its library when it was constructed. I believe this, the library is a lead silver building.
Gold.
And, lead gold?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, Alder Allen. So this is aligned with that, as Alder Herbst mentioned, this is about $170,000 at this point in time. The city also spoke with our design consultant for the project, FGM, and also asked for a quote for this work, and ultimately Pepper had a lower quote available, so this is the lower of the two quotes. And we do anticipate, as the construction drawings are completed here in the next 60 to 70 days here, another cost estimate to be done by Pepper, which will allow us to determine where we're sitting from a budget perspective as well. So there was an email sent to Common Council with an update on the project a couple of weeks ago. If you have any questions regarding the, the project, please feel free to reach out to me, Chief Morales, or Paul Woodard, the city engineer managing the project. Thank you, Chad.
What is our, what is our goal? What is our target for lead? Are we looking for a silver or gold, or? I know that when we did the library, I was kind of the driving force behind getting the lead gold, and we had looked at what it would take to go to platinum, and the cost was really high. So do we have a goal in mind?
I don't have that information, Tim. I don't know if you've heard, heard anything on that front at all. Let me just double check the docs. Nothing is immediately coming to mind here.
It might have been in the memo that Bill had prepared as part of this agenda item.
When we discussed this in RCC, there was talk of almost certainly attaining silver
I think it was silver. I don't know.
Silver is what sticks in my mind.
Yeah.
Immediately clear in my mind.
Okay.
Call the question.
Okay, so where we are? Oh, yeah. So all those in favor of resolution R-58-25, say aye.
Aye.
And you pause, the motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Tim.
Thanks, Tim.
So now we move to park commission update.
The only update, we reviewed the, the parks commission components in the CIP and approved that at last, last week's meeting.
Okay. Library board?
Nothing to report.
Commission of Edgingwell?
Uh, no, nothing major to report. Other than that, we already, Chad, kind of covered it in his announcements at the Pancake Breakfast. I believe most of us are signed up to help out that day. If you aren't, there, I think there's still a couple committee or a couple slots that you can reach out to Mandy to register yourself to assist that day. Other than that, we've just been compiling and working together to create a more robust, like, outreach plan for the city that will kind of basically be around more so like the Alders and working with more of the constituents from their various districts, but that plan is still being put together. So once we have something finalized, I'll come back to council and have a more robust report at that time. Thank you.
Thank you. Transportation and Transit Commission?
We meet on Thursday.
Thank you. Community and Economic Development Authority, SIDA?
Our meeting was canceled.
Okay, no meeting. Ag and Rural Affairs Committee?
We had a great listening session a couple of weeks ago, thanks to everybody who came out and for Four Winds Farms for hosting, and we are meeting again next week on the 15th at 4:00 PM.
Thank you. Bicycle and Pedestrian Commission?
We met April 2nd. We discussed potentially finding presentation time for committee of the whole, so we'll have to discuss that with our, whoever ends up being our council president this coming year. We are, we were also talking about bike audits, potentially having members do bike audits around Fitchburg. And then, I'll mention this during my Alder report, but the committee wants to start doing different walking, kind of, events around Fitchburg to promote, you know, pedestrian use, and there will be one coming up that I'll talk about, because it's in my district.
Okay, so great idea. Thank you. EMS?
Nothing to report.
So now we're moving to HNI.
Mayor, I'd like to, sorry, I'd like to make a motion to postpone resolution R-196-24 until another committee of the whole meeting where we're able to further discuss this. I feel like we just haven't had the appropriate amount of time. The resolution for the strategic plan.
Second.
Okay. All those, so what is the plan?
Because it, I was gonna say, it needs to come back to the Equity Committee, we wanted to review it too, but I think HNI needed to go back over it again to, to review, like, the newer changes that just came out that were made, because we just got it, what was that, last week, like, this week's time, like, after we met?
Okay, so...
Before we vote on that, I just want to say that one of the things that I'm happy about with this revision is there were all these data measures that were, how many meetings have we had to discuss whatever? And the number of meetings is a dumb metric, so I noticed that in the revised version, they have taken all of those out, and I looked through this, and they actually put in some really meaningful data measures, which I think will be helpful as this plan moves forward.
So in terms of the motion on the table, I'm not sure that the committee of the whole is the right venue for this, because like, we're moving towards a vote, I assume, on what we're gonna do, so it feels more appropriate to have the conversation in the council meeting when we're leading up to a vote.
Like the next council meeting?
Maybe, yeah.
Okay, yeah, maybe.
I also think that we should think about, before we re-refer to committees, which we could do, like, is it, are we really gonna dedicate more staff time to doing revisions to this plan? Because if, if you, if committees look at it and do revisions, that is all gonna be more time, more consultant time, more staff time. That, that's my concern. Like, is it worth continuing on with future revisions when it's just a plan that can be modified or, you know what I mean? Like, I, I would be more interested in if the committees had, like, a strong opposition, like, there was that first round where it was like, this is unacceptable. That was definitely a concern for me, and I don't know if that's been resolved, and it would be worth having that discussion to find out, but I just worry about referring it to committees for further revisions, just like, keeps kicking the can down the road. So please, yeah.
No, I guess my question would be then, like, what are we gonna do with this document?
Wait, what?
What are we gonna do with it?
We what?
The, the strategic plan document.
It's for, it's for staff, I think, primarily. Chad, do you wanna?
Okay, 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 okay.
But I, I mean, like, are we about to, like, take this document that if we keep it as is and implement things based what it, on what it says currently?
No, I don't think that this, I wanna, I already sent you an email with my recommendation and my, my, my feedback, and I think the, this is one of my perspective. I think the plan has good bones, but it's not quite there yet, okay? I think we need to refine. There is something missing that I sent, I, I explained to you in my email. And I think this is, I think that we need to take the time and do it and do it right. The strategic plans sometimes get messy until we find, we feel comfortable what we can, what we would like to see in this plan. I think, as I mentioned, it has good bones, it needs some refinement, okay?
Madam Mayor?
Yeah.
I just have a question then. Does that require the edits to be made by the consultant, or is these things, like, we can kind of encompass at the, and by we, I mean, like, literally people on council can assist and not just city staff making these changes? Like, can that happen, or does it have to go back to Allison and company to be paid for the...
Yeah, Chad can give you an update.
So I think we would need to contact the consultant to determine what level of ability they have to do any additional edits. I know that they have moved to other projects, and I don't know where our current plan would fit back into their existing, our current workload. I think one of the, one of the considerations council should at least take into, into thought here is recognizing that there may not be everything contained within the plan that all members of Common Council or our community may have, have, have desired. I think being cognizant of the process that was used to get to the point in which we are at is, is important, and to, you know, recognize what has been included into the plan to this point in time is what the consultant has heard through the various input mechanisms. And I certainly recognize that the first version of the plan was not met with a, a lot of enthusiasm, with some notable concerns. I hope that most of those concerns were addressed through the revision. I certainly can't speak to everyone's individual feelings there, but to Alder Gerhart's point, you know, there, there comes a point of diminishing return, so to speak, to continue to, to revise and edit this. And ultimately, if this plan is adopted by Common Council, I think there'd be ongoing conversations annually between city staff, the mayor, and the Common Council as to what are the things that you would like to work on as it relates to the strategic plan each year. So that doesn't mean, obviously, that everything that's included in the plan would be worked on. Certainly, in any given year, there's definitely not the ability to do that, but there may be things that take, you know, multiple years to even get at, or maybe the Common Council will decide that there are some things in the plan that, for whatever reason, that they're not, they're not gonna move forward with. So I think it's, you know, this is, it's a framework, it's a guide to be utilized to help, you know, identify priorities and utilize the resources that, that the Common Council has available to, to, to take care of the things that are mentioned in that, that document.
Jay?
Yeah, I mean, I, I looked through it. I read through it. Some things have not changed from before, but a lot of things have, and the things that have changed are good. So I think, I think this plan is a generally good plan. Is it perfect? No, but none of the plans we ever do are perfect. And I, I think the notion of diminishing returns is real, that the more, we can go and spend more time, and we can try to wordsmith everything in here, but I think the, in reality, what's gonna happen is if we approve this, which I think we should tonight, staff will have it, and they'll be able to work with it, and over the next six months or a year, maybe they'll discover that there's problems that need to be resolved. It can come back to us, and there can be more changes made as that happens. But at this point, I think continuing to, to hash it over, because this has been out there a long time now, I just don't, I just, I just don't see what we gain.
Yeah, I would, I would agree. I would, I would actually go back to my motion to move the, I, I agree with you, Gabrielle, it's maybe not committee of the whole, but I had a great conversation with a constituent, for example, who, there was a page on the urban service area addressing people outside the urban service area. That whole page was taken out, which a large part of our district is outside the urban service area. So I think just having a little bit more time to continue to review it. I, I think the mayor, who's been very diligent about reminding all of us to review it, but I think also, we've had some pretty big things. Today's agenda was, is still going, so I would love to make a motion to, again, to support what Alder Allen says, maybe not kick it back to the committees, but just bring it to next council meeting, so we can all have a fruitful discussion to say, are there any large changes we need to make, or can we approve it, move forward with it, or does anyone have large concerns about approving it whatsoever?
I think we need to move it to the commissions.
You think we should kick it back to the commissions?
Yeah, I had to go back to HNI, and, because they need to see the revision, they haven't seen it.
Because they haven't seen this version?
Yeah.
Oh, Donald, I guess you said that. I'm sorry. That was rude. I'm very tired, I don't function after 11:00.
So if that's what we're gonna do, it should probably be a motion to re-refer to the certain commissions specifically, and then the date returned by after those meetings take place.
Second.
When is our meeting? Can you, can you, can first?
Yeah, it looks like the next meeting of Healthy Neighborhoods would be May 7th, first Wednesday of the month.
CCC is 22nd.
Right, and the... Right, and the Community Equity Committee has already got their next meeting on the calendar. I think you mentioned the 22nd, Alder Dancler.
So we need to go to May.
So you could go to, May 13th would be the council meeting after both of those.
Okay, so I, okay with the, but what, what do we do with all my recommendations? Because the problem is we, we are sending recommendation and what we are gonna do that? We are gonna incorporate those recommendations to the plan or no?
Well, I think to some, some regards, that would be a common council call, right? You know, if, if at the meeting on May 13th, you would like those things included?
Yes, please.
Then I think that would be some information that could be debated and discussed at the May 13th common council meeting, but.
And I have other, I have other comments on paper that we need to adjust too. So who should I send that to? Adam?
Yep, absolutely.
Okay.
So Healthy, just so you're aware, Healthy Neighborhoods' next meeting is on April 30th. Oh, they had that rescheduled, right? Yeah, because the council didn't take up its responsibility on March 26th. So, but that meeting is gonna be a long, long meeting for that committee because that's the meeting where they're going through this, the 19 applications we had for HNI grants to, you know, make a recommendation back to the council. So I don't know that, I don't, I don't know that it would be fair to them to dump this on them at that meeting. Are they going to meet again May 7th? I don't know. But I, I'm not, I mean, I'm not gonna be there. Right, I understand.
Okay, maybe we can, can we move it to the last meeting in May, maybe, and be sure that?
Well, the, I guess the question would be is, we, we don't know if.
We can call a special meeting.
If they are meeting May 7th. If they meet May 7th, you could keep it May 13th. Otherwise, their next meeting would be June 4th. Point of order, I would move that we extend the meeting for 15 minutes.
Is 15 minutes enough?
All those in favor of, no, I think half an hour.
Half an hour?
Yeah.
Okay, fine. Is there a second?
Second.
No one wants the second bad.
All those in favor of extending the meetings, well, this will happen when we miss one big meeting in the month of March. All those in favor of.
I was available.
All those in favor of extending the meeting half an hour, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries.
Nay.
I guess the recommendation I would make is the council can postpone to May 13th. And if Healthy Neighborhoods does not happen to have a meeting after their April 30th meeting, council can postpone again if they feel that that's what they would like to do.
Okay, okay. So what is the motion now?
So then, you would need a motion to postpone to May 13th and there will be re-referrals, it sounds though, like to Community Equity Committee and Healthy Neighborhoods. Is that correct?
I make a motion to postpone to May 13th with a referral back to Healthy Neighborhoods' Advisory Committee and Community Equity Committee.
Second.
All, all those in favor of postponing, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Okay, May, okay. So next we move to Housing Advisory Committee.
No report.
Landmark Preservation Commission?
No report.
Tree Advisory Committee.
Oh my gosh, we have two resolutions. I move approval of Resolution R-45-25, approval of Moving Pittsburgh Forward Strategic Urban Forestry Management Plan.
Second.
And Tree Advisory Committee approved.
Finance approved.
Park, Park Commission? Okay, what is this, Nicole?
This is more of a procedural thing. We have a grant from the DNR that we received. And we actually have to increase the, the budget. Sorry, I lost my point. We have to increase the budget essentially to accept these fees. And then we have a 50% match with these fees, but all of that will be matched with staff time. So Ana Healy has done a great job of essentially finding funding outside of taxpayer dollars to take a DNR grant and do this. And we just need to approve it from a budgetary perspective. It does require a two-thirds vote.
Okay, any comments or questions here? None? All those, I need to say, oh.
Roll call.
Oh, when, okay, I have a resident that he registered in opposition of this. It was Patrick Cheney. So Patrick, if you're watching, I say it. If he's watching.
Yes, for roll call.
Roll call, please.
Thank you, Mayor Alder Allen.
Aye.
Alder Dancler Jr.
Aye.
Alder Gerhardt.
Aye.
Alder Herbst.
Aye.
Alder Jetser.
Aye.
Alder Maldonado.
Aye.
Alder Baffedari.
Aye.
Alder Wheeler.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Okay, thank you very much. Next one.
I move approval of Resolution R-52-25, approval of 2025 Spring Tree Planting Plan and Tree Advisory Committee approved.
Second.
Finance approved.
Did Park?
Parks approved.
What is this?
So we have identified the need to plant 252 trees this coming spring. We set out an RFP and we got six bidders. And one of them came in super reasonably priced. And so we want approval to carry forward with this plan.
I would, I would just add, it's a wide variety of trees, different, different species is what we're looking for to diversify our tree cover, so.
A lot of diversification. Thank you, Alder Herbst.
Okay, thank you. All those in favor of Resolution R-52-25, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Next we move to the Ad-Hoc Community and Equity Committee. Any report?
Not at the current moment until we, the plan comes back and we have further discourse around that.
So we don't have any report from other commissions. So we move to standing committees. And then we already did finance.
No report.
No report. And then we move to Personnel Committee.
Other than the updates you gave around the standing contracts that we were unable to negotiate, there are no further updates.
Thank you. Public Safety and Human Services?
No additional report.
Okay, thank you. And then we move to unfinished business. And we have an ordinance.
I can make a motion. I move approval of ordinance 2025-004, amending the start and end time of regularly scheduled council meetings by amending Section 461A of the Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances.
Second.
Okay, so this is something that we discussed, I think in a committee, committee of a mid, oh, committee of the whole. We discussed to bring the starting time for the council at 6:30 PM. And then this one is gonna affect finance, it has to start at 5:30, public safety at 6:00.
Does that give any undue hard, I'm a big fan of starting them at 6:30 so we're not here at midnight. But does that give any undue hardships of anyone on finance or public safety and human services?
No.
No.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think this, I think this to me seems like a solution in search of a problem. I'm not sure what the problem is we're trying to solve here. But if you've got a meeting, and sometimes public safety meetings take an hour. Couple of times a year, we have longer meetings. So if you have a meeting that has to start at 5:30, like maybe the finance committee meetings are gonna do, and you have a job where you work until 5:00, that's gonna make this difficult for, for other people who may wanna seek office. Or, I mean, maybe everyone here is fine with it, but we've always had this gap where people could go home and change their clothes and maybe grab some food before coming out to the meeting. So I'm not really certain what the impetus was for making this change. I remember when we discussed it very briefly in a different meeting, but there was not really any discussion there, except Chad mentioned to me, well, you know, sometimes when staff people have to come to the meeting at night, you know, they have, they have a really long day. And I get that. But, you know, the way we used to handle that is, you know, they'd take the next day off.
I would say for city council, I don't, I don't function well super late. So selfishly, I actually am very much a fan of that because I can't just take the next day off of work either. So I, I don't say it's a, I don't think it's a solution in search of a problem. I'm very for this.
This is what we're gonna do. This is where we're gonna pilot. If it doesn't work, we change it. Okay? That's it. Okay, so any other comments or questions?
Roll call.
Well, I just wanted to make one point that I think we should think about how we communicate this to the public, just because people are used to starting at 7:30. So I think that that could potentially create some problems with testimony if people think it's a 7:30 meeting. So we'll have to really do a good job.
And it's affected May 1st, so. Okay, what do you want? Roll call?
Of course.
Okay, roll call.
Thank you, Mayor Alder Allen.
No.
Alder Dancler Jr.
Aye.
Alder Gerhardt.
Aye.
Alder Herbst.
Aye.
Alder Jetser.
Aye.
Alder Maldonado.
Aye.
Alder Baffedari.
Aye.
Alder Wheeler.
Aye.
Motion carried, 7-1.
Thank you. Okay. Where are we at?
New, new business.
Oh, new business, sorry. Okay.
I'll move approval Resolution R-6025, approving salt purchases for 2025, 2026 season.
Second.
Port Public Works approved.
Finance approved.
Okay, what is this?
This is to purchase approximately 700 tons of salt through the state contract, somewhat time sensitive. Normally, we, we purchase about 1,300 pounds a year, but we were able to buy 13, 1,300 pounds, pounds, 1,300 tons, I'm sorry, thanks, Bill. But we were able to purchase, last year we bought, or this year we bought 500 tons of excess from Cottage Grove. So this is, this is for 700 tons. And normally, we budget for 1,300 tons, roughly $122,000 for that, or a little, $92 a ton roughly is what we pay for the salt.
So we're buying, Dave, we're buying less salt?
We're, we're, we had bought some already, Nicole.
Yeah.
And so then we're getting enough to fill us, fill us up. But we had bought 500 tons from Cottage Grove.
And I think we're buying at discount, isn't it?
Yeah, we got a reduced price even below state contract from some excess road salt that the village of Cottage Grove had that we were able to, to purchase. And then obviously purchasing the rest that we are anticipating needing for next winter off the state contract, which is what we typically do.
You get 500 tons of anything, I hope.
Okay. All those in favor of Resolution R-60-25, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Next one.
I'll move approval Resolution R-6825, approval to open custodial accounts with Pershing Advisor Solutions, BNY Mellon Bank, and engage Ellers Investment Partners as investment advisor.
Second.
Finance approved. This is basically in regards to the arbitrage payment that we talked about several weeks back. We had invested federal money like we do normally, insurance, what do you call it? Interest rates are so high that we got way, way more investment return than we anticipated. So much so that you actually have to make an arbitrage payment back, back to the federal government. It ends up being good for us because we get to keep about half of that investment. But because we're not ready to stop investing that money because we haven't been able to spend it all, in the short term, in order to reduce that potential future arbitrage payment that we will have to make, we've decided to engage Ellers to help us open new accounts to basically incur fewer taxes on these. It's gonna reduce the, the arbitrage payment that's forthcoming. Ellers is offering us like a flat rate fee to help us do this. And it's really just a strategy to make sure we have less arbitrage payment at the end of the day.
Just related to that, Chad and Misty sent all of you listing, you know, the ARPA, where we're at budget wise, you know, what we've spent and what we have coming up, just so you're aware, aware of that.
So where we are gonna invest this money?
Misty can, she has details, but basically I think these, the custodial accounts is gonna invest it in.
Yeah, but where are they invested money?
Misty.
So the custodial account will be at Pershing. Ellers will help us do the investments. And the, the true investment is in what's called a SLUG through the federal government.
What, what type of financial instrument they are, do you know?
It's kind of like a federal security, but it's tax exempt. So it's a specific instrument called an SLG, a SLUG for short. I can email you additional information if you'd like.
Yeah.
It's a very specific type of investment.
Okay. Any other question, comments? Okay, all those in favor of Resolution R-68-25, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. We are at, yeah, no.
Almost there.
12.
We are at 12. So, so here is a recognition of our outgoingly elders. So I want to say both of you, thank you very much for your service to, in the last four years. I appreciate your, you know, your feedback comments. Sometimes we, we didn't see the same, you know, the same light.
Oh, you'll be happy I'm gone.
I would say, Jay, I think that we are gonna miss all your institutional knowledge.
Oh, I'm not going away. I'll still be around.
I know, but here in the council, you always bring back some of the perspective from many years ago. So I, I appreciate that. Your memory is incredible. You, I don't know, you have that memory, things happened 30 years ago. So Jim, thank you very much for your service. We see you around, for sure. So, and we have something to give you. So you can come to the front and we're gonna take a picture.
Oh, for heavens.
All the council member can come with me.
Jim's gonna say something.
Yes, okay. Oh, here is your.
Oh, thank you. Lay my sleeve for you.
Nicole showed you up, so you at least gotta show your compliments.
Oh. Well, I'll show them after the meeting.
Okay.
But it, it's really been a pleasure working with each and every one of you. I've learned a lot. You know, Dave telling stories of the old times, Joe, your insights have been very valuable. Bill? I was just gonna, I was just gonna say, keep the meetings short. Gabrielle, I like your enthusiasm, especially with the EV vehicles and the solar panels. And when you said that, you know, in finance, you read a lot of stuff. I really appreciate that because you make it so simple. And I just like, I depend on you when you read that. Chad, just playing Switzerland, doing great. Mayor, I loved our conversations that we have on the phone. And I appreciate that you would call me. And we would have some conversations about what's going on. Tracy, well, I'll be working with you. I'll be a chief inspector for elections. Jay, again, your institutional knowledge, I appreciate it. Donald, what can I say? I can't even sit, I can't even sit next to you, man. Maybe another year I could dress like you. And Nicole, just our little sidebars that we go back and forth. I've really been very appreciative of that. But it's just time for me to go. I mean, I'm 62. And, you know, the younger people coming up, got a lot of energy and really appreciate it. There's a lot of problems that need to be solved. And the energy and the thought processes that go into each and every one of you that you bring to this council, I just think is amazing. You know, I'm gonna get corny now, and I'm just gonna say, you know, a line from John Legend's song Glory, you know, no one can win the war individually. It takes the wisdom of the elders and the young people's energy. And basically, you know, may not like what I have to say as an elder, but hey, we know where all the landmines are. We've been around for a long time. So good luck and keep up the good work.
Thank you. Jay, do you want to say something?
Oh, sure. 11:45, so I've got 14 minutes.
No, we have all the reports.
And so it's been, it's been a good thing. I've, I've appreciated getting to know all of you who sit up here, and I think the city's in good hands. Logan ran a good campaign. Logan was also the beneficiary of Sean Path's hatred for me. And as a result of that, there was a bunch of money that came into this campaign from outside of the city of Pittsburgh. And so in a way, we got to see in my district what Citizens United has done. And it's not just affecting big national races, it's now filtering down to local races. So it's disappointing to see that happen, but I guess it was inevitable, and that's where we are. But, you know, we will see what happens as time goes on, and thank you all for continuing to serve the city, and I wish you good luck as you try to solve some of these problems that we have coming up.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so next, we are in item 13, Alder District Report. Do you have anything to say? Okay, district one.
Yeah, I referenced it during Bike Committee, but we are going to have a walk around Dunn's Marsh. It will start at the Boys and Girls Club on Genuin Drive, Genuin Road, excuse me, at 1:00 PM on Saturday, April 19th. It will follow an Easter egg, Easter egg hunt that's gonna take place in the morning. Dave, you might have the times on those. And it'll be followed by a community meal, so there's gonna be a whole day full of stuff in Dunn's Marsh. There will be binoculars available, so we can be birding. And it will be co-hosted by the Allied Dunn's Marsh Neighborhood Association and the Bike and Pedestrian Committee in Pittsburgh. So I welcome you all to join, take a nice walk, hopefully the weather will be nice.
Can you send us an email tomorrow?
I will send an email. We're gonna work on creating a flyer for it, so.
Social media posts, too.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, oh, good idea, thank you. Dave?
The, as Joe mentioned, the Easter egg hunt is at noon, and it goes pretty quick, and then right after, and it'll be at the same place, right by the Boys and Girls Club. Also, on the 19th, there's a workday. We have just an outstanding group, a mountain bike, that works on the mountain bike trails in Quarry Ridge Park there. And they have a workday on the 19th, starting in the morning, so if you can free up, there's really a, a great group, you know, volunteers and, you know, if you can find the time. And this, this Saturday, from 11 till 1:00 or 2:00, we have our Bike Distribution Event at, at New Fountains, where we're giving away roughly 70 bicycles. And Pittsburgh Bike is setting up an obstacle course. We have Learn to Ride, and then at 12:30, we're gonna have a, a community ride around the, around the neighborhood. But the, we have maintenance technicians, so if you have bikes that are, that are broke or something's not working, you know, we have two, so we'd like to keep them, keep them busy for that, for that time. So please stop over, it's a, it's kind of fun, energetic event.
Can you send that?
I will.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I will.
Okay, dear.
Nothing specific to D2, but this is phosphorus week, so be cognizant of your fertilizer use on your lawn. On April 17th at 6:00 PM, there's a meeting at the Middleton, or a presentation on neonic pesticides at the Middleton Public Library. These things are, you know, common, commonly used in agriculture, and like one tiny granule is enough to kill 125,000 honeybees, or something along those lines. And April, Wednesday, April 23rd, from 2:00 to 8:00, 2:00 to 6:00 PM, at Madison College Goodman South Campus is an LGBTQ+ affirming career fair. So if you're an employer or, or looking for work, you'll have an opportunity there. See openmadison.org for more details.
Thank you. Gabriela?
I'm just gonna amplify again those, those events coming up, the recycle event on April 12th this weekend, 8:00 to 11:00, and the waterway cleanups, April 19 and April 26. Those are really fun events.
What time is the water?
9:00 to 11:00.
9:00 to 11:00. They're always great events, and highly recommend people come out, it's a lot of fun.
Okay, thank you. District 3.
Not much going on specifically in the district, except the Sayen Road construction is underway and is inconveniencing people, but it will be much better once it's done. And just to remind people again of the Senior Center Breakfast on April 27th.
Thank you. Donald, no report? Jim?
Oh, I just can't wait to come back when the Greenfield Plan comes before council session, so far, Nicole and Micah.
Okay, I would like to see that. I will be watching.
He'll be here. Just a couple of dates, just wanted to state that Pittsburgh got its Water Utility Report Card, as one of my constituents informed me, and we got 90 and above, all straight A's on our Water Utility Report Card, so exciting news. Chad already mentioned the tree events, and then Jim, we will miss you terribly in District 4. And I, I appreciate so much what you said about having new, young, fresh voices at the table, and I just wanna extend a welcome to Logan and Micah. I think they're so energized and so ready to represent their community, and we're super excited to have them, but.
And you just turned 30.
What? That's offensive. I'm just kidding, that's great, happy birthday. But we will miss you, and we're, we're so grateful for your service. So that's all the updates on District 4.
Thank you very much. Announcement, our next common council organizational meeting is on April 15 at 5:00 PM, please be here. And next, regular common council meeting on April 22nd, and what is your meeting?
Oh, we're gonna do our standard introduction that we typically do.
Valerie and I will do the orientation.
Orientation for new council members? Okay.
Yeah, nothing new, just the standard we do every year.
And we are gonna have a new handbook, isn't it?
Yes, we have been working on a new council handbook that we will look to debut for Alders at that meeting.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much, everyone, long meeting. I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor of adjourning the meeting, say aye?
Aye.
And you post, Buenas Noches, we are adjourning.